Friendlier.
Do we need to go?
If you want to, we can.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I did make copies for all of you guys.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that.
You guys want to go into closed session now? He's got an update for the college.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that.
I got a couple.
You have? You have another topic? Well, I need to know what the topic is so I can.
Equipment.
You want to let Matt know what it is so he can tell me the provision or whatever?
I'm not sure if you can go into executive session. Unless it's relating to utilities.
All right, we're at six.
Or should I say that in a commissary? Want to bring it up? Or should I?
There's something you can do in the commission report. I would do it there instead of executive session.
Yeah, this is just a question you have, right Greg?
Well, I'm actually looking to have a second opinion.
Oh, that one. Yeah, that probably should be included as a contract, so.
I don't think that.
That would fall under a contract.
I don't think that's.
Yeah, I don't think you can really talk about this in closed session back. You've got to bring it up in your commissioners' report, you can't, but.
All right, I'll bring it up.
I'll give you this one back.
Ross, I had it in my case, just right there. Okay.
At six oh one, people are going to be mad.
Yeah, they're going to be mad. All right, everybody ready? All right. Like to call the Oglesby City Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Stefanielli.
Here.
Kern.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, number four, public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to number five. Approve minutes from the October twenty first, twenty twenty four, regular and executive session. Is there any questions, concerns, modifications, or changes? If not, I can get a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion. We approved minutes for October twenty first, twenty twenty four, regular and executive session.
On the executive session?
I'm sorry, there's a comment, go ahead.
On the executive session, is there anything in there that is unfinished business?
What?
I believe we're in negotiation with someone. Possibly. So I would like to.
The topic.
Are you talking about executive session?
Yeah.
Is there a modification to that you want to do?
No, there's unfinished business that I don't think should be shared with.
This isn't, this isn't for release, this is just approving it.
Oh, okay, we can approve.
We approve, I think it's the first, the first meeting of January and the first meeting of July, is that correct?
Yeah, January and July every six months.
I just didn't want to.
Yep, no problem.
Hey, that's a good question.
So there's a motion, education, can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
Number six, approved bills presented for payment in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. If there's no changes, modifications, or concerns, can I get a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seven, approved payroll for September twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. If there's no modifications, changes, or adjustments, if I can get a motion to approve, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eight, audit presentation by Samantha Casey, Hopkins and Associates, welcome. Well, that way the people at home can hear you.
Ross is our audience technical guy, thanks Ross.
Appreciate it.
Sorry about that, my fault.
Bless you, God bless.
Bless you.
Hi, I'm Samantha from Hopkins and Associates, for those of you that don't know me. Um, I'm just going to go over this financial summary. There's some sheet in the back of it too that show kind of what I'm talking about. I've enclosed, actually, three stretches, I think, with this, this too. The first is a comparison of cash, cash position as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two, and twenty twenty one. The second is a comparison of the fund income statement for the fiscal years twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. And then the third is the general fund, the five-year comparison. Overall, the cash position of the city of Oglesby has increased by one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two from April thirtieth of twenty twenty four to from twenty twenty three. At the year-end, the cash balance is eleven million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one. The cash balance in unrestricted funds, which include the general electric, water, sewer, and sanitation, increased by five hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-one during the year, and ended up at seven million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five. At the end of twenty twenty four, inter-fund transfers were made to get fund balances in all funds to be positive. And then cash and restricted funds increased by one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-one, which resulted in a balance of two million, four hundred thousand, thirty-five. So your total cash balance, I'm sorry, the number I gave you before is wrong, was ten million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine. Overall, for the year, the city had a net profit of eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight compared to a net profit of two million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-six for last year. The general fund did have an operating loss this year of three thousand, four hundred prior to considering transfers in and loan proceeds. This is a decrease from the income last year of one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and ninety-four. Net transfers in from other funds resulted in six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, and loan proceeds of one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven, or five hundred and seventy, I'm sorry, resulted in the general fund ending up with a profit of eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and three. Revenue in the general fund this year was three million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine. Last year it was three million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty. Expenditures in the general fund this year was three million, six hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine, compared to last year of three million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. Some differences this year, there was a decrease in replacement tax that's expected to go down again next year, which is expected to go down everywhere, so it's not just you guys. There was also a decrease in building permits, last year you received the building permit from GTI. There was an increase in state grants for your hydrant grant, but also a decrease in federal funds since the Arvo money is done this year. There was also a decrease in telephone expenses. I know when I talked to Becky, the city reduced a lot of the phone plans and now has most of like your staff and everything using their phone just with an app now. So you don't have as many phone lines and are not paying for as many phones. Last year for expenses, the city purchased a new police vehicle, but this year there was also an increase in equipment maintenance, there was numerous large expenses for that tanker truck. And then there was an increase in equipment expense to purchase the new tanker truck this year. Increase in street maintenance. The tip fund did have an operating loss this year, which is considered one of your major funds. That was mainly due, that is now closed, so that will be on your financials next year. The electric fund had an operating profit prior to transfers of three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six for twenty twenty four compared to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen for twenty twenty three. Six hundred and ten thousand, six hundred was transferred out to other funds to eliminate the negative fund balances in those funds. This year there was an increase in the power, purchase power adjustment, but also a decrease in the reimbursement from GTI, which caused total revenues to be consistent with last year. There was an increase in electrical salaries and also an increase in systems maintenance. The water fund had an operating profit of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three thirty-two for twenty twenty four, and in twenty twenty three it was two hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. Revenues remained consistent with last year. There was a decrease in equipment and distribution maintenance, but then also a slight increase in system maintenance. Sewer and garbage fund user fees and expenses were consistent with last fiscal year. The other fund revenues, operating loss for the fiscal year was four hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two, which was an increase compared to last year's operating loss of two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine. Some of those major differences included also the decrease in replacement costs. And then in the MFT funds, the Rebuild Illinois Grant is no longer going on, so last year was the last year for that. There was an increase in pool salaries and there was an increase in your destination development in the Motel Tax Fund. The city put in a new disc golf course. And then insurance fund liability and unemployment insurance both went up this year, which, I mean, is probably going to happen next year too. Don't know if you've gotten your insurance bill or not yet. Overall, the city is in good finding, had a good financial year. Unrestricted cash balances continue to grow, to be used for rebuilding the reserves necessary to replace infrastructure in the future. At the end of the fiscal year, the city had outstanding long-term debt liability of one million, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, one twenty-five. There are two letters in there, one that says, one fourteen letter, and that just basically states that there's no disagreements with management. The other is a management letter. You're just over budget in the pool insurance, tip number six, and the sewer fund. And then, I think I talked to Becky about this, get your, the deposits at Heartland because you moved money around. They just need to up your securities there so that you're covered in case there's big failure, is that going to happen? Probably not, but you still need to be covered since it's like taxpayer money. And the only other matters is just make sure that you're utilizing those high interest rates right now. Anything else? That's a lot of numbers, sorry.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any questions?
Well, Samantha, I just want to thank you for all your help with this and the service over the years. You've been great, very, very pleasant to work with. And some of the items you cited, I'll be touching on in my commissioners' report, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, number nine.
Are we going to accept the audit?
I'll make a motion to accept the audit.
And I will second that motion.
Sure, sure. Number nine, accept in place of. You don't have a jet on you?
No, there's one at the beginning of this.
Do you need the tech guy on the job over there?
I found it, Tony.
All right, I'm willing to help.
Yep, accept in place of.
Okay, you got it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the, accept the in place on file, the fiscal year twenty four audit.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge.
Aye.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number ten, approve ordinance number one-two-seven-three-dash-eleven-oh-four-twenty-four, sets wages and benefits for ambulance director and ambulance staff, Finley.
Okay, we've talked about this before. Kathy is retiring, so we will be having a new ambulance director. He will be starting on the seventeenth. Peter Ragazinski is going to be the new director. And then also, have we been announcing and advertising for the full-time paramedics with the wages and the benefits and stuff like that? So now we have it all in one ordinance that's going to be covering everything. That's why we kind of did everything at one time. So if there's no questions or anything like that, we could have a motion to approve ordinance number one-two-seven-three-dash-one-one-zero-four-two-four, setting the wages and benefits for the ambulance director and ambulance staff.
Was anybody else having any further comments? McDermott.
No, there's no comment here, something we need to do.
Baldridge?
I'll happy to second his motion.
All right, looks good. Is that a motion that was made?
There's a motion.
I get a second, please.
I can second it or Stefanielli, either one.
Either way. Second, second.
Roll call, please. Whoever you want to scribble.
Aye.
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 Aye. Number eleven, award bid for cable and conduit for Malek Substation Project, Baldridge.
It's another part of the Malek Station out there that was on the previous list that we passed months ago. The city didn't receive any bids for the specification for the cable and conduit. It's due to current conditions right now, like everything else that we were trying to get before. Since the project still requires these items contracted by two of the existing electrical distributors for quotes of the items, we had a quote for ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, and we had a quote for thirty-six, six seventy-six. And it's our understanding that BHMG suggests that we take the thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six. Any questions?
Any comments on that? Stefanielli?
Nope.
Finley? McDermott?
None.
Nope. I appreciate the explanation, and I always like seeing at least multiple quotes that gives us opportunities and options, so. All right, if there's nothing else, if I can get a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the.
Award the bid.
Award to award the bid for thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, sixteen cents from Fletcher Reinhardt.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Number twelve, approved purchase of squad car and equipment, Finley.
Okay, last week, our last meeting, we put this on file. So this time, I'd like to go ahead and approve the purchase of a squad car and equipment, where half of it will be coming from the drug fund and the other half will be coming from the city. The city's portion is thirty-five thousand, six eighty-eight fifty.
Okay. Any other comments, McDermott?
Like I said last time, last meeting, I support the place, and I'm one hundred percent for this.
Baldridge?
I'm happy they found a way to bring the cost down and look forward to supporting that.
Stefanielli?
I'm all for it, it's public safety, sign me up, you got a yes vote.
Excellent. No, it's great that we found other ways to, to manage the cost between them and replace our existing fleet to make sure everything's updated. If there's no other comments, if I can get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the squad car and the equipment.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefanielli?
Aye.
Aye. Number thirteen, old business, I don't see any items there. Number fourteen, new business, I don't see any items there either. Number fifteen, public comment on any topic. Seeing that there are none, number sixteen, we'll go into commissioner reports, Commissioner Stefanielli.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize the Heritage Field subdivision for yet another successful year of trick-or-treating. I think they still hold the title for highest turnout of trick-or-treaters per year. Don't be jealous for anybody else from the other subdivisions. We recently moved five hundred thousand dollars to Illinois funds, which gives us a much better interest return. This represents six months, May to October, at eighty-three thousand dollars per month approximately, from the Water and Sewer Fund to our wastewater treatment fund. I want to thank Commissioner McDermott for helping me to address the logistics and the finance of this wastewater treatment plan undertaking. The cost has put us at a projected annual payment of one point seven million dollars per year. Currently, we are just barely able to put aside the one million per year without wiping out the other city fund accounts. I will continue to work with Commissioner McDermott to find a better resolution than this already invested million dollars plus project with no way of funding that was kind of dropped on us when we took office. And that's all I have, thank you.
If I could, I appreciate that, thank you very much. I don't mean to butt in. That is one reason why I would like to request second opinion to ensure that we are doing the right path. This is not to say I distrust our engineers, but to ensure the best possible outcome for the city of Oglesby, I am asking for everyone's support in that matter. And.
Okay.
I understand.
Does it have to be an agenda item next meeting or something?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, we're going out of order a bit.
I know.
I don't have any problem if you want to. I mean, if you want any kind of official action, we'll have to put it on the agenda, but if you just ask for a straw poll, we can always do that as a separate item, if you want to do that after the commissioner reports, is that what you want to do?
No, we can, whichever way is proper way of doing it, I mean.
Put it on the agenda, Mac.
We'll put it on the agenda next time.
There you go.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Stefanielli.
No, no problem, thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you, Greg.
All right, Commissioner Finley.
Okay, the only thing I have is, once again, Kathy is retiring from the ambulance director. She's given eighteen years of service to the city of Oglesby. So on Friday, November fifteenth, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, we'll have a little retirement party here at City Hall. Everyone's invited to come in, thank her for her service. I know over the last eighteen years, she dedicated a lot of time, a lot of her own time, the kindness that she shows, the caring, everything you could ask for in a director and an ambulance when she comes. She always had a smile on her face, and she will be, definitely will be missed. But like I said, November fifteenth, Friday, eleven-thirty to one-thirty, if you want to stop over for some cake and some stuff like that, then wish her well, that would be great to see everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner McDermott?
Starting seven o'clock Wednesday, we'll have a code red east of Walnut and Watson. It should begin from nine AM to two PM will be a boil water order. I would also like to remind everybody that tomorrow, Election Day on the fifth, please be courteous of everybody, everybody has a right to their own opinion, and please be respectful. That's it.
Before we move on, just because you talked about the code red, I did get some texts today. Is there a known time that's out there when people will be without water for the east side of town?
From what I understand, it's within twenty-four hour, nine and two.
Okay, so that's.
Right, then there will be a boil of water.
Okay, so between nine and two.
Right. Hopefully it ain't going to be twenty-four hour, but.
Okay, all right, well, that's just.
We don't know for sure.
Just trying to keep residents.
Yeah.
Thanks, Samantha.
Everything we can do to try to keep the residents as informed, because I'm sure not everybody will get the code red, not everybody will get the Facebook post, not everybody will be listening to this broadcast, so there will definitely be people that'll be surprised. So trying to spread the word as best we can is.
Right.
Very helpful.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baldridge?
I'd like to thank the Electric Department for participating in the schools, Oglesby Washington School's Egg Drop Science Project. I'd also like to thank We Are Oglesby for allowing me to be a part of their We Are Lighting Up Oglesby Christmas Tree light-up this year. I would like to thank Merkel Rich Christmas Trees for donating a tree to us, it's about eighteen foot. And they'll be doing that on December fourteenth in Seneca Square, and we hope everyone can participate after the We Are Oglesby Parade. That's all I have. Thank you.
Pretty good.
Number seventeen, mayor's report, wasn't on my original report, but I would like to congratulate Heritage Subdivision for their continued success. For, I will say though, that the Cedar Creek subdivision has stepped up with at least three residents adding to the full-size candy bar, so we hope to be competitive.
One of these years you'll get there.
Someday, someday, someday. Congratulations, I love it. All right, first item actually, though, is the community tree. So We Are Oglesby in efforts are looking to do a community tree, so this right here is examples of some of the decorations that will be available at the churches, schools, and City Hall. So if families would like to come, and they can decorate them, they can decorate them here, they can decorate them at one of those locations, and we are going to get those up on the tree. So hopefully, a lot of people will be participating in that. City Hall will need those by December fourth, so. Second item is American Legion will be honoring Veterans Day next Monday at eleven AM at Memorial Park. It's been a good service and a good program in the past, so if you have an opportunity, it's a great solemn opportunity to go witness that. Number three, this kind of ties in a little bit with kind of our long-term HUD program that we've been working on. We're trying to do, upgrade homes in Oglesby, the city put twenty thousand dollars towards it, where it's going to be some relatively large renovations in people's homes and stuff like that to benefit. However, that's a relatively long-term kind of solution. It's probably going to be about a year before now that we even know who was selected for it, if we have it. I have found out that there's this Illinois Valley Center for Independent Living. And when I got to get a tour of the different things that they do there, I was very impressed. It seemed to me like it was a much smaller scale version of what we're doing for, with our HUD program, but it's things that people could get like right now. Like, for example, they have an amplified phone center for the hearing impaired and stuff like that. You can get phones issued to you, you can get these, these nice dictation devices and stuff, so if you can't hear, it can, it was going the entire time, the presentation, so as she's talking, we're seeing this device spit all the words out there. In fact, I even joked that it's way better than whatever the technology that Amazon Alexa uses, because I was able to read word for word everything. So there's a lot of different things like that, so please contact them. Again, Illinois Valley Center for Independent Living, they have a lot of different various programs that can help out with different disabilities or age-related things to make your life more comfortable inside your home. And then number four, Thursday at six PM, there'll be a Plan Commission meeting here. One of the purposes of that Plan Commission meeting is to discuss possible updates to the comprehensive plan. The last comprehensive plan was done in twenty twenty, so they're looking to see what kind of modifications might need to be tweaked or modified with that. And the last item I have is tomorrow is Election Day. So please make time to go, whoever you're going to vote for. I will say that as Oglesby residents, one of the things, it's one demographic we all share. So by the more people that go, it gives us more representation power when it comes to all of our Illinois and federal representatives, because there's a lot of help that we need, so when we have people that are showing up to the polls, it shows them that, hey, pay attention to Oglesby. So that's all I have. We do possibly, I think, have an executive session item, which is under operation of municipality, of a municipal utility, or the operation of municipal power agency or municipal natural gas, when the discussion involves should skip over the natural, sorry, I wasn't prepared for this one. Delivery of electric are the results or conclusions of load forecast studies, five ILC S one-twenty slash two C twenty-three. Can I get a motion to go into executive?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. And there is no anticipated action after executive session. Thank you, everybody, have a great night. Aye. And there is no anticipated action after executive session. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Where we go on here? Oh, absolutely.
Are you guys?
Right. No. Hold on a second. Me as. Get out your phone and jam. Yeah. This one's. What? 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 What?
But I think it does. Is this a Rocker's Rules of Order question again? No, it's our, it's our ordinances.
Do we need to get a parliamentarian in here?
No, actually it's not our orders, it's statute. It's statute because of our form of government.
Do we need a parliamentarian?
All right. All right, can I get a roll call? We're back in open session. Can I get a roll call, please?
Aldridge.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Steph Mullin.
Here.
Here. And number 19, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Hi.
Finley.
Yes.
McDermott.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. We are adjourned.